Good?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order today. We're going to start with a special meeting of the Board of Trustees. Um, for a brief executive session. Um, so like a special meeting, let's go ahead and start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Now, if we have it in the book, but would entertain a motion to approve. Do we need, I guess, do?
Mister Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Here we go. Um, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, which is. Okay, it was emailed. It's simply a, um, exact session.
Mister Chairman. I moved that the board recessed.
We have to approve the agenda first.
So move the agenda be approved. How about that one?
Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow is absent. Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Okay, that passes six oh, um. Mary Martha would love that.
Mister Chairman, I moved at the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant.
Would you like me to do it? I got it on my phone.
Go ahead.
Nice try, Mary. Mister Chair, I moved at the board recess and executive session pursuant to the open meetings exceptions for matters of non-elected personnel, which if discussed in open meeting might violate the right to privacy. With members of the board, Dr. Kim Kroll and Shelley Stoltz present. Should resume in twenty minutes.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Fantastic.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow is absent. Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Okay, that passes six oh, we will recess. I'll just note for the record, I, I saw Trustee Winslow walking in, so I, she will be at Hill, she'll be here for the exact session, I'm sure. Um, but we will go ahead and recess. We'll note the exact times in once we, once we get the. Electron.
That's done.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Winslow?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Great. That is a seven oh. Thank you, everybody. We will now move into our work session.
Yep. Let's, we're going to do budget discussion first. Uh, Kent has a. Honors a night that he wants to get to in Hillsborough, so we're going to let Kent start through that and. You've got your little booklets. In front of you, I think, right?
I do.
Hey.
Go ahead. Need to sign in to Zoom here.
Oh. There's little snacks back there if you want to go grab a small snack. Kitchen, no, I was just wondering. Well, he's just, I don't want to miss anything. Connecting to them. Want you to grab bacon?
I had enough time to stop by home and grab my bag and some bacon.
Oh.
Bacon sounds good.
Shell.
Now you're making me hungry.
There's.
Or hair fall out and.
Well, you wanted just.
Are there big ones in mind there?
I know, it's not ready to come out. There it goes.
That better. We're just looking out for your hair stuff. Yeah.
And beard. And shoes and suit.
Okay, there we go.
There we are.
So, um, hopefully you all have the booklet. We sent them out by email and in a hard copy last week. Uh, so there's two sections. To this, the, um, operating budget. And the supplemental, so I want to walk through the operating budget, uh, in a fair amount of. Detail and then just highlight a few things on the supplemental. That's okay. So if you have any questions or comments, uh. Please stop me as I'm going through here. Okay, so on the, um. Operating budget, uh. First page. Uh, we have some notes here, um. And. Few things to, to highlight there. Um, credit hours. Not too much of a change from what we thought in February, but, uh, we do think we're going to be down about. Three point eight percent for the year and for next year. The budget that we're. Uh, the preliminary budget recommendation that we're going to show you tonight is based on a. Three point three percent decrease for next year. That's a combination of, uh. Demographics and, and the out. Uh, outlook, uh, for the region and then, uh, also the increased, um. Tuition costs for. Um, in-state out-district students, we think will cause some decrease. Valuation. I checked with the county, uh, Will Johnson at the county says they, they think right now that they're looking at a fifteen percent. Increase for valuation for next year. So we had a discussion about that. In our VP meeting. And we're recommending. Um, for the. The preliminary recommendation for next year's budget that we maintain. The taxes levied at the same amount that it's been for the last three years. That would decrease the mill levy by thirteen percent. Dropping it down to a little over twelve mills. And we can talk more about that as we get into the recommendation, but, uh, that's sort of a foundational piece. That we're looking at. Uh. Compensation. Uh, we are going to. Right now we have a placeholder. We'd hate to say we're recommending it this time and, um, we have to go through negotiations, but we put a five percent increase. Uh, in for. A college-wide salary increase. And we believe that we're going to have to, um. Increase the funding. To the self-funded health insurance pool, um, and Shelley's not here. I know she could talk a little more about that, maybe at a future meeting. Um.
What, what percent?
Well, right now we're looking at ten point seven percent.
Very bottom.
Bottom of page one. So, um, and obviously. We'll be talking more about that as we move forward and as we get into negotiations also, that's a, a topic. That we'll be dealing with there. So, Ian, talk, stop me if you have questions. Now, the next page, this is a summary of the current year budget. And what we're looking at here is. The summary that we gave you in November and the changes that we're making. To the current year estimate right now. So you can see on operating revenues. we're increasing that estimate by almost half a million dollars. So I'll go down to the next page. This is a detail of the current year revenues. So when we made the the November estimate, obviously, we didn't have second semester. So we generally update our student sources estimate in February and it, it did look quite a bit more positive. And so you can see there that we've added about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the tuition and fee increase of the tuition and fee categories. Also, it looks like our, our waivers are gonna be down from what they were last year. So overall, that's about a three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar increase to the student sources again for the current year based on the February estimate compared to the November estimate. Down on line thirteen then, under state sources, we're reducing the XL and CTE revenue. Apparently, the state went to a system of paying paying the CTE or SP one fifty-five revenue before they actually had the headcount values. So once they had that, then they looked at the past two years and determined that we had been overpaid for those years. So they deducted that from us in the current year. They made adjustments for all the community colleges. Some went up, some went down. We went down in this case. We don't think that's gonna affect next year. So when we get to the twenty twenty-four revenues, we're gonna estimate that that's gonna come back up, but it's a one-year hit for us on the state funds. And then down here in the other income on line twenty-one, this, this amount really comes from interest income on funds that we have deposited. We could see that a little bit in November that it was starting to be a turnaround. It was much more noticeable as we got into February and March. So we've increased the estimated revenue for this year for interest on reserve funds that are in the bank. So going back up to the summary page, that's the the difference there in the operating revenues that we're estimating. So on the expenditure budget, again, I'm gonna drop down then to page four. And we have a list here. There's some additions. We're asking for an increase this year, twenty thousand dollars for some software for well, it's requirements of GAZB and it has to do with leases for the current year and for next year. It's in software subscriptions and it's quite extensive. And we think this software will help both the accounting and the IT departments. So we're requesting that addition to the budget. These next two items are really just in and out, or you can see they're the same amount, one negative, one positive. A few years ago, we decided, determined that it was beneficial to hire a third, uh, outsource our groundskeeping. That outsourcing, those outsourcing companies are getting really busy and it's really hard for them to service us. So we're gonna try to bring that back in-house. And so that's just that change. It's an in and out again. We have an added position here, the CRM position, IT position. This was actually approved at an earlier time, but somehow didn't get into our budget update. So we need to make that correction. The big item this year, you can see there on line eight and we call that temporary allocations. This is a an account we have set up in accounting where we go in every year and when we the biggest part of this comes from when we estimate raises for a year, we put it in this temporary allocations account. And then as the, as the raises are distributed throughout the college, we anticipate that it's gonna zero out, but for the past couple of years, it's actually accumulated a balance. And then there's also some ins and outs from positions that are vacated and refilled. And so again, over the past couple of years, that's it's got this balance in it which needs to be zeroed out. And so we're gonna do that at this time, reduce the expenditure budget by that amount. And we also looked at that when we talked about our placeholder for the compensation increase because this amount was added to the budget in the past with the assumption that it would be for salaries, but for whatever reason, partly because we haven't been able to fill positions and things like that, it never did get allocated. Then every, every year, actually each update, fall and spring, we go through and look at the employee benefits, which is, you know, the health insurance, payroll taxes, capers, those kind of things. The part-time instruction, which is adjunct pay and overload and the scholarships. And all three of those items, the spring analysis indicated that we could reduce those items. So we are gonna be reducing those. And these items here, the temporary allocations, the employee benefit adjustment, the part-time instruction adjustment, scholarships, those decrease the current year budget, but they also increase the base budget for next year as we move into the Y E twenty-four budget.
Have a question.
Yes.
Number nine, the employee benefit adjustment. Can you tell us how much? What percentage each of those benefits are that have been adjusted? The only reason I'm asking is because we are going to raise more than ten percent of our left to raise that account by docking more paychecks for the health insurance. So what is contributing? It's not very much, much money, but you happen to know and what's contributing to that one sixty-four?
Hi, I don't think, Carrie, would you know?
Can't remember off the top of my head what that made up.
I can't remember off of the top of my head how that was distributed. How much was each category? But.
I don't want any health insurance in there anyway, but I just.
I think there, I think we did. I think part of it was health insurance, but I wouldn't bet a large amount of money on it specifically, but.
It's not that much.
But. Yeah, we look at that every year though. So in the, in the fall or in July, we're gonna look at it again and, and if we need to add more back, we do, but we don't leave it in there thinking, oh, it's gonna increase.
No, it's I don't know how much, I haven't looked at any information to see how much help it has gone up as a whole as far as the cost.
And this is all based on twenty-three. So once we set it at the beginning of the year, it stays the same.
Right.
And then we'll increase it in twenty-four with the increase.
Okay, thank you.
So just going back to the summary. So the, the other change then, we looked at the revenue changes, expenditure budget changes. The other change there is in the unspent budget estimate. And Carrie went through all the accounts, especially the payroll accounts, I should say. That's where the majority of this we think will be and came up with an estimate about two point four million dollars of unspent payroll budgets. And so I looked at, you know, where we are on the non-payroll compared to last year and how we finished that last year. So I'm we've made a determination that we should increase that unspent budget estimate for the current year by the seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. Part of the reason that I think it's, we need to do this is we have a history of underestimating this amount. And so I think we're gonna try to be more realistic. If we're overestimating it, we'll find out soon. We'll find out in the first part of July. But historically, we have underspent the budget by more than we've put in the the estimates throughout the year. So you can see that based on all those assumptions, we would end up increasing our unencumbered cash in the operating fund by about one point one seven million dollars. We started out the year with a little, little over ten million, one hundred thousand. So based on these assumptions, we would end up with about eleven million, almost three hundred thousand, which is about twenty-one percent. And I want to note that we have in the past had this ten point five percent target. I, I know that there have been discussion in finance committee and in VP meetings where there's been indications by both the administration and certain members of the board that we probably need to have a a discussion sort of a focused discussion. What is the best target goal for our unencumbered cash? I, I don't think, I mean, you may wanna comment on it tonight, but my thought is that may be a sort of a a topic that would take more time and we might wanna focus on that in an upcoming work session.
That's a good idea.
Oh, according to the data books online with K Bor. Is the under, unencumbered cash balance of last year twenty-two-nine? Do you remember? Because it usually is about twelve, fourteen, twelve, eighteen and then.
Yeah, I think one of the, the things comparing this number that I'm showing you to the data book, I believe that is all of the general fund and PTE fund. When we show you the operating fund, we're not showing you those designated reserves like the capital project reserve, the IT reserve, the strategic development fund and some of those. So that tends to increase the amount that you would see in the data book. So I think if you're saying that the data book showed it as twenty percent last year, I think that's correct for what they're doing.
Twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million. Yeah. Yeah, that's.
So how.
And that's, that's about what we told you at the end of the year in, in the summary of all the funds.
Right. And in twenty eighteen, that same line shows twelve billion. Which I'm just trying to compare this on page two, I'm trying to compare with that pending unencumbered cash. What do you think your best estimate overall is going to be as of the end of the year for that total?
Well, I think.
Compare that somehow.
I think it would be less. I haven't really looked at that. The information to do that is in the, the book here. We have the, all the accounts. We have the the operating fund here. Then we have all those designated reserves, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. So we would need to add those. I believe it'll come down from the twenty-two million, from the twelve million significantly with the influx of the HRF money. We're starting to spend some of that down. Some of it's still, you know, like the when we look at the deferred maintenance, still has a pretty hefty fund in there.
Right.
So yeah, we can, we can bring you a.
Well, I can add them up as we're going. That's my first number, right? Eleven-two?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So let's go ahead and, and look at the what we call the preliminary twenty twenty-four budget recommendation. And that starts over, I think, page five is the summary. And so here the top line operating revenues, what we're doing here is comparing the current year revenues, which we just went over to the, our estimate of next year's revenues. And you can see that there's a about a six hundred thousand dollar increase. So I'll skip over to page six here. And we anticipate about a hundred and forty, almost a hundred and fifty thousand of tuition and fee revenue increase. So that would come about from the increase in the rates less the decrease in the enrollment. So it's sort of a net figure that we're coming up with there. The state operating grant for the general and the PTE funds, the latest information that we received from Heather Morgan indicates that we will have a, an increase of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars there. The XL and CTE. This is based on a calculation that Esam does. He's not here again tonight, so I'll take his name and attach it to that to seven hundred and twenty. But part of this is, is is the two hundred and eighty thousand represents going from the current year to next year. And as I talked to you earlier, we had that decrease in the XL and CTE this year where they took out money from prior years. So again, that's a combination of a couple of things, adding back that loss that we had this year and then anticipating some growth in that particular revenue for next year. So those are the two estimated revenue increases for next year from student sources and state sources. You can see the local sources. As I mentioned, we're basing the preliminary recommendation on no increase to the amount of taxes levied. So we're not putting any increase in local sources next year over the current year. So just going back to the summary, you can see those two changes. Oh, we haven't got into the, I'm sorry. We need to look at the expenditure budget recommendation for next year. That would be over here on page seven. So we had some non-payroll reductions through budget development. We have to increase the scholarship estimate for the increase in tuition because we have a lot of scholarships that automatically increase. If there are a, a tuition scholarship and the number of hours stay the same, then the overall scholarship budget has to go up. Counseling position. We're in the planning stages for adding a bowling team and a shooting sport team. So we put in some money for those items.
And we would come and visit with you guys when we have a better plan put in place, but we're putting those in as placeholders right now.
I'm so glad.
Got them. Yeah.
They're, they're very popular. Fort Hayes has an excellent shooting team and you go whoa.
A lot of high schools in the area.
Yeah, high schools have started adopting.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. It's your meeting. So we put in some little bit of money here for some additional HLCT services. EMT, so we're in the allied health area. Um, EMT, uh, so we're in the allied health area, some maintenance services they need to increase. HR uh, needs to, is asking for an increase for an employee survey. I think we get into the big ticket items here. Uh, the compensation increase placeholder at five percent, it's about one point six six million. Again, we're asking for a half a percent for market equity increases. This is a program uh, where Shelley goes through and looks at areas where existing employees. Um, really need to be increased for us to maintain um, our ability to hire people in the marketplace. Uh, Shelley is estimated, working with IMA, that we're gonna need to increase our contribution. To the health insurance by five hundred thousand, and again, um. That probably something that you may want to spend more significant time and have Shelley go through that as she gets a little more information. I'm not sure I could uh, give you a whole lot more information right now on that, i- it's based on our usage, I do know that. Uh, based on our usage and the um, overall health insurance market, which are both increasing. Uh, some HR legal fees. Um, some IT software, Winfield nursing supplies, just a couple thousand dollars. Some items for welding tech and business administration. IT software escalators and some other IT expenses, I, I'm not going to try to detail those, if you have questions. Um, someone here might be able to answer for you, if not, we certainly uh, can bring back more detailed information on these items.
Well, I would, where is exactly our welding program?
You're on campus.
About how many kids were.
It's limited space, so. Oh, like limited space for classes, but overall, not sure.
Tom's going to take a look at that.
Yeah, if we could expand into bigger space. We could make a whole bunch more.
Handover just took over an antique mall and turned into a welding.
Yeah, it's private, big dollar.
That's a problem, I understand, it's just.
You know, I'd like to know how that is going to compare to what we can operate for.
Ours is going to be quite a bit cheaper than theirs, probably, usually the private ones are, are pretty expensive.
Probably, but maybe some can check into that.
Sure, Julie, I'll pick up on call.
Steve, you can enroll one of your kids.
Actually, my brother and my friend and I would like to take some welding.
Well, there you go, see, wouldn't be wasted, call. We have a welding class on the weekends.
Yep, weekend welding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So while Tom's looking at that, might just go back to the overall summary for uh, next year back here on page. Five. So right now, based on these assumptions and the recommended um, expenditure budget. And you can also see that I've adjusted the um, unspent budget estimate just a little bit, I've gone up to five percent. But it's uh, still a little less than what we've got for this year. So overall, uh, we're looking at a deficit budget. Of about one million dollars right now, and we think that's justified because. We are in, in pretty good shape with our unencumbered cash, certainly compared to the overall ten, uh, ten point five percent estimate. Uh, we still live, it's about eighteen percent. Um, and without going into a lot more discussion on where we think we'd like to uh, see that. We, we do think the eighteen percent is closer uh, from an administrative standpoint. To what would be reasonable than the ten point five percent, but. Uh, again, this is just an overview and we'll have more time to discuss this uh, as we move forward. Um, the, and I still want to go through um, some of these supplemental funds, uh, Tom, did you want to?
On the, on the um, revenue side. The state funding that we got last year that we had not previously received with the state finally fully funding us, that my understanding is that was. That bill guaranteed funding for last year and this coming year, but isn't guaranteed beyond this year. Is it, am I right in saying that?
Well, going forward. Um. The formula that they use takes into account the enrollment, so if our enrollment goes down. And the appropriation at the state level would stay the same, then we certainly could see a decrease. Um.
But proportionally, it would be, unless the law changes, it's going to be based on enrollment going forward.
Right, it wouldn't be like they're going to take that three point five away from us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless somebody changes the law.
Um, yeah, I think it's.
My understanding was the bill just guaranteed it for two years, and that's why I want to clarify, because I mean, is there uncertainty as to what our state funding would be after this next year?
There's always uncertainty, now, I'm not even sure that it guaranteed it for two years, I think.
It went into the base budget, didn't it?
It went into the base budget, it continued in the base budget, so we're getting that one hundred and ninety four thousand on top of the base budget. I think, I don't know, Kim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that two years. Was more of a proviso that Kabor was making because they really determined how the allocation is going to happen. And so I think there was an understanding that they were telling people, you know. We're going to give you a little bit of time, if you're going to go way down, and then you need to make plans for the future. Right now, um. Yeah, I mean, you would hope that the appropriation would, would grow up a little bit and um. If we have a decline, declining enrollment, our share of that could go down a little bit, so we just got to kind of wait and see, I think.
Okay.
The, that money didn't mean to us, here, it's the first time that the community colleges, technical colleges, like in what they call fully funded. Butler was one of the institutions that for the past twenty years has been underfunded, there were about seven or eight institutions that were in that, in that boat. Um, and, or more underfunded than other institutions, there were some of those institutions, even though everybody was underfunded, there were some that were getting more. Money in that timeframe that they should have, even though everybody was underfunded, and so what's happening now is that there's a re-centering of those dollars. And so the institutions that have been overfunded for the last twenty years. Know the dollar amount that they need to eliminate from their budget because that whole pool of funding for the community and technical colleges is one big pot. And so the institutions, for instance, Cali is one of the institutions that's been overfunded. So they were told you have two years, you have two, we're going to re-center over basically a three year timeframe, but. Uh, here's the amount, uh, overall total amount that you're going to lose, and so really to plan the right way, you need to eliminate. Half of this from your budget this year, half from your budget next year, that, that funding then gets redistributed to the institutions that have been. The most underfunded, so that's partly where some of that funding is going to come to Butler is in that re-centering process of all of that funding.
So it sounds like it was less about making the pie bigger than just changing how the pie is cut between all those.
It's always that way, it's how the pie is cut, yeah, the, the legislation, well, and there's, but there is some additional funding, but. Part of it right now is how that funding is internally from that pot is distributed to the institutions.
I think the increase that we got last year was because they made the pie bigger.
They did.
There wasn't really a change in statute to, to that, it was the fact that they funded the full statute.
Yeah, they had.
And I guess the heart of my question is, is, is it reasonable for us to anticipate after this year that that's going to happen again?
We don't know that, we'll see what, we'll see what happens when the legislature comes back. Uh, and what, what budget they approve. There's some money for the community colleges in the current budget that's being proposed for one-time expenditures, like. You know, money for cybersecurity, there's money that's been proposed in the budget for. Uh, the community colleges, there, there are seven, I think, community colleges that a number of years ago combined with. Technical schools, and those, those combined institutions in that timeframe have always been given or have always had. Capital outlay funds given to them as a combined, combined institutions, but there are a lot of us that haven't gotten those, so there's some funding now in the budget to try. And give the rest of the institutions some capital outlay dollars for deferred maintenance and things like that, so it, you know, we'll just see how it, how it all plays out. Um, it's, you know, it's always kind of a, a, a little bit of a guessing game. I mean, we know, you know, we know kind of what's been proposed, but we'll see what the governor approves and what the legislature approves.
Okay, thank you. For twenty twenty four, we got three point four last year, we're expecting three point three next, in twenty twenty four, assuming.
Well, no, that three point four, three point five, the graduation set our base, and next year we're anticipating. That to increase, that base to increase by a hundred and ninety four thousand dollars.
So we'll get the three point four plus.
Yeah, the three point fours, yes.
Okay. Credit hours for welding, we're, this year was five hundred. Uh, which is from five seventy.
How many, how many kids is that?
I don't have it by. Is that, is that welding credit hours only, not, not Spanish?
Yeah.
So if we could, I'd like to move on to the uh, supplemental information here.
Thank you.
So um, start out with the general designated fund, um. Funds, and this is a, again, a whole list of mostly smaller items, um, not going to spend too much time on that. It's on page um, S one, by the way. I would note um, on line seventeen, you can see the HIRF indirect funding, we still have a cash balance there of five hundred thousand dollars. But uh, we have a detail of that account later on here in the supplemental, and it is all um. We do have commitments for that money at this time. And then page uh, two is a similar. Um, well, no, I'm sorry, page two is the detail of the HIRF money. Um, that came into the designated account, and again, the reason that it went into a designated account. Is that we didn't spend directly out of the. We didn't spend all the money that we got from the grants directly for purchases, say, of uh, PPE and, and equipment and things like that, some of it. We could take as lost revenue or indirect cost allowance, and that we put over into the general fund in these reserve accounts. And so. The, the total sources that we're looking at here is about one point uh, eight million dollars. And you can see, this is not a new list, I, I think this list is the same uh. You know, are there any changes from November, Carrie? No, this is the same list that was in there in, in November, so by that time, in November, we had. Made plans to spend all that indirect HIRF money. So then the next page, we have the PTE fund designated accounts, a lot of these are uh, P accounts, um. There's one in there, um, that has a rather large negative balance, and we're looking into that. Um, I think there's an offset, some of it may have to go back to the operating fund, I'm not sure, but we're checking into that. So, give me the sum of the, the bigger reserves um, on page. Four, it's not a real big account, but um, this is the academic development fund. And again, the only change we've made. In our year, our estimate for uh, this year's activity in that fund is we had. Anticipated that there's going to be some signage come out of there, and we're not going to take that signage out of there, I'm not sure if we're going to. Guys. Okay. Okay. So on the next page, we have the strategic initiative, a designated account. And you can see there's uh, two things here that we had planned to use this for, we have some consulting and software. Uh, that several of the departments are using, I know my department used some of this, uh, HR, ITs use it. Uh, we set aside three hundred thousand, um, whether we use all that or not, I'm not sure if we will. Um, there have been a few additions, the fine arts lighting, campus lodging. Fine art sound system, I believe these were all approved last month at the board meeting to come out of this funding source. Back in November, we had anticipated based on board action, uh, we had set aside one point two five million for the Redler. Uh, building, I think Tom's going to probably tell you later that it's going to be less than that. So right now, we're saying that we only have about twenty four, twenty five thousand of uncommitted funds left here. But I think that'll go back up before year end, uh, due to the. The fact that we're probably not going to spend the one point two five million for the Redler payment. Very good assumption, okay. Uh, the next is the facilities designated fund, this fund um. We put it, we have a beginning balance of four hundred and thirty three thousand, we transfer about. Uh, four hundred thousand each year from the operating fund over to the uh, facilities designated fund, these are for. Um, maintenance items, the more uh, ongoing maintenance items, not so much deferred maintenance items, so things that. We more do on an annual basis, and you can see the list there of things where we plan to spend that money. We generally plan to spend all of it, oftentimes they don't get around to every one of these. Projects, so a lot of times we'll have money carry over to next year, but this is our spending plan right now for that money. So we don't anticipate uh, a year end, I know, Julie, if you're adding these up, we don't anticipate. A year end unencumbered cash there, but well, could be some cash left over.
Are we missing priority four?
Pardon me?
There's a, the priority numbers go from one, two, three to five, is that just a numerical issue, or is there something in there missing or covered otherwise? In the list of projects?
Probably just a, probably just an oversight.
Yeah.
Oh, and the priorities, yeah, they, they go and adjust these, they probably just eliminated one and it didn't get changed.
No worries, thank you.
I, I know Ireland um, and Carrie got together on this to, to reevaluate, so I, I believe the list is correct, the numbering is probably just wrong. Thank you. Uh, next we have deferred maintenance fund, um. So we uh, started the year with four point seven million dollars there down on line seventeen. Um. Back in November, we'd estimated that we were going to spend three point five million of that. Uh, there's some projects over here on S eight that, let me skip over to there. Okay, this, I'm not sure what was taken out, but there was a um. A project that was taken out this year that they're apparently not going to do, you remember off the top of your head, Carrie? Okay. Or maybe that was, yeah, it said various projects, so it was one of those projects, uh, they, uh, they decided they couldn't get done this year. So right now, we're planning on spending three point two million, of course, a big item is the Simpson projects, which was mainly the five hundred. Uh, gymnasium, AC, ductwork at complete overhaul. Uh, mechanical equipment and the sixteen hundred building where we renovated for the. Uh, mechanical equipment and the sixteen hundred building where we renovated for the police science and our police station. So right now we anticipate. That this designated account will have one point five million dollars at the end of the year roughly. Then I'll skip over to capital projects.
Are you going to go back through deferred maintenance? Um, S eight, I just saw removal of Grizzly Adventure. So we are going to take it all down.
Yes. That is a plan.
It hasn't been open since COVID and, um, it's not been certified. It's not insured. Uh, we don't have facilitators trained or anything like that. It's, you know, it's, it's an auxiliary, um, it's an auxiliary service and not, um. You know, not mission critical.
Yeah, I wasn't really going to go through all of these, uh, individual projects. Uh, it hasn't changed much and it. It might be good for us to have Ireland walk back through some of these with the board at a different time, but we definitely need him here for that. So moving along the capital projects, uh, we started that. Uh, beginning of the year on line twelve with about one point one million. And the softball stadium project. It was approved by the board to come from this funding source. That's the only thing we know of at this time. So we anticipate. A, uh, year in unencumbered cash about six point five, so six hundred and fifty five thousand for that designated reserve. And the technology fund designated reserve. Um. We have about one point eight million in there. Um, you can see that we're anticipating our spending plan to be just a, a little greater. Than our anticipated revenues. So we think that fund balance will drop. Uh, down a little bit to about one point seven five million at the end of the year. Again, I, I didn't, had not anticipated that we would take time to go through these projects. Um, particularly, but, uh, Bill, uh, has obviously done a lot of work and we have the spending plan. Outlined over on page S eleven and I'm sure if we wanted to set up some specific time for that. Um. You know, we'd be happy to take us through there, right? Yeah. I know we did, um, last year, I think when we went. When we put this, uh. Put this together at that time. Capital outlay fund. Um. The Oracle server and storage that was approved last month, uh, we did, um. Indicate in the, uh, board approval that that would come from the capital outlay fund. So that's going to be the big change. Here, uh, we'll have this four hundred and thirty eight thousand, um. Well, that's what we're in showing right now that, um, would be in the, that fund at the end of the year. And. Insurance deductible reserve. Um. See. So this is our, um, the cash that we have on hand. Right now, Carrie, is that, that's correct? That's our?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's not really, that's me.
So we'll, we'll be looking at that again as we get closer to year end. Um. We do think the, the fund is in reasonable shape, but as I mentioned earlier, um, the, um. Usage claims are up, so we, we do think we're going to have to. Put money in and that, that's why we, we put that five hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget. Increase. So we'll be talking more about this item as we move along. Um, next page. It's fourteen. Is our, um. Campus life funds, um, and again, pretty. Pretty good balance there. We are anticipating spending that down a little bit, but, uh, believe that's a healthy fund balance at this time. There's some detail on the next few pages. And then there's some information on restricted funds and agency funds, but that pretty much, uh. Is the presentation I want to make at this time. So. Um, I'd open it up for any questions and. See if we can wrap it up.
We just have two gaming rooms. El Dorado and Andover. So I added all those funds. And I came up with. The undercover cash balance at twenty million zero nineteen. Which I just have the last, back to twenty eighteen to compare. That's all I pulled out of the books and. You know, that's a significant increase. I don't know. Significant to me.
A lot of it's federal stimulus dollars that came in.
But to keep that money in there and still collect more taxation. I'm not wording it quite right, but it just, it just is, just seems like a lot, but twelve, uh, twelve million back in twenty eighteen to, uh, twenty million this year. It did come down from, yes, yes, last year at twenty two, the year before it was eighteen, but I'm sure COVID had a lot to do with that.
Shall we, what, what's your go time?
He said six.
I'm, I'm an, I'm, I'm. You see me over here not paying attention. What Tom has to share is important. So I'm not sure you have enough time to say that. I don't want to discourage question. Not, I don't have to leave it any particular. Okay.
We're gonna be, um. We're talking more to you about the, uh, recommendation. I think that's probably when we. I should get into some of those discussions about what's appropriate.
Right.
Unencumbered cash percent and how that would affect the, uh, recommendation for the, um, tax limit. I do need to run.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, thank you. I think we're going to continue to see more of the trade. Increase, maybe.
I hope so. We need more, we need more people in trades. So I hope, sorry. Okay. Talk about culinary?
Yeah, culinary.
Uh, Dr. Kroll is passing on, um, yeah, drafted the contract that, uh. Uh, the foundation's been working with the college on trying to, um, um. Get sort of the, uh, final numbers for the, this board to discuss and then, uh, vote on hopefully in May. Um, so just to back up a little bit, uh, to kind of get the board back to where we were back in November. So, uh, at that meeting, um, the foundation was seeking sort of an idea of, of, uh, kind of a range of what the, the found, or the, uh. College would spend and we proposed a one point five million dollar price tag at that time. Done, uh, the, the, this board's elected to go with a one point two five oh, uh, number for the cap on, on what the college would spend. So as we were coming towards the end of the year, we had gifts coming in. We got to begin to see a little clearer what our revenue was going to be on that project. And so, um. We, um. Took all the, kind of the comments at that board meeting in November back to the foundation board. And discussed all of the, uh, some of the concerns and, and, and input. And so we've come back with a, uh, a proposal to present in May. Uh, a, uh, request for a purchase price of six hundred and ninety five thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars to, uh, to the college. Uh, and then, um, the, uh, foundation would retain the pledges and pay those out over time. Uh, in this document also, we're asking that the college, um, uh, consider paying the interest on the loan that, uh, will have. Foundation will have in order to, uh, manage those pledges over that period of time. And to make the foundation whole and we anticipate, uh, taking care of that. Loan that the foundation will incur, um, at another, I think another eight years, nine years. Um, and then that will be, will, the foundation will be done with that obligation and everything will be, uh, at zero again. So. Um, that is the crux of the, of the, um. The offer that's being thrown to the board and for consideration. And, uh, is there anything else I need to cover?
Does that include everything inside of it? This, I'm so impressed.
It's a, it's a five point five million dollar building, um, and this purchase price is about. It's just under thirteen, about thirteen percent of that, the, the value of that building. So.
Yeah.
Everything was, uh, fundraised, donated. There was a little bit of, we spent a little bit of money, um, to. Purchase some kitchen, needed kitchen equipment because they expanded the kitchen size. So like mixers and some smallware stuff. We spent a little bit of operational funds to, um, finish out some of the kitchens, you know, the smallwares stuff that needed to. Uh, to be in place, uh, for the kitchen classroom space, but. All of the equipment, um, furnishings, everything that's in there was part of the. Um, donated, uh, fundraised. So.
Now, we'll say that the college had a, had a participate in this as, as well. The spark funding that was, uh. The college was eligible for, the college had applied for that and did receive spark funding of which went to this project. So that was about five hundred thousand dollars. That was a, a perfect gift, um, to help make this project where it is. So, um, the college was also a partner in this as well.
Fantastic.
I have a question. You mentioned, uh, a stream of returning interest. Is that in here or that?
Yeah, that's in here. That's, um, we are, um. Fire agrees annually reimbursed seller for its actual interest cost paid on such remaining construction debt.
Where's that at?
That's, uh, section one, last sentence. And so that, what that is, is, um, um. Um, instead of, instead of asking for one point five oh. From the, the college, um, um, which we wouldn't have an interest payment if we paid it all. I'll have one, we have to have that offer and then you were to pay that, we would retire the, the loan that we have with Redler's. Um, this, uh, allows us to go ahead and reduce the purchase price for asking the college to help us with the management of that. Loan that the foundation is taking on. I think there, uh, we don't have any additional money to take care of that, that interest to pay that loan. Um, and so that's what we're asking that for.
You have the actual number?
Yeah, I just, I got some.
I don't need to write the second, but.
But no, I, I did get some, I got, um, some numbers here. Uh, we're looking at about. Six and a half percent rate on a loan. Um, so what we'll do this year is if the board approves this purchase. Then we will take the, um, the pledges that will come in this year. In addition to the six hundred and ninety five thousand dollars that we would receive from the sale. Uh, and apply that to the Redler loan, which it was a balance of about four hundred thousand dollars on the loan. And so that would be, uh, uh, we have about a hundred and fifty four thousand coming in this year. For, um, uh, the pledges, we, we will apply that, which would, does that give us that four hundred thousand dollar number? And then our, our pledges come in, they start to decrease over time, but the bulk that comes in the next three years. And then it really drops off after that. So the interest would go down as far as the amount, um, each year, because the balance will be decreasing.
Do you know what the, what that total, potential total amount of interest payment would be for those years yet? Do you know that information yet?
Well, I, I've got the first year, which is about twenty six thousand, the first year and, um, you know, just ballparking it, you have a, you're paying right now a lease amount of about twenty eight thousand. So. I'm, I'm kind of guessing the cash flow perspective. You have some dollars there to pay that. That's going to decrease every year as that balance decreases as well.
And it sunset about three years.
The majority will sunset and then you get into about, I think the. Year. Twenty six, twenty seven, it drops down to forty seven thousand as far as pledges and then.
It'll be like twenty five grand, twenty grand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two grand.
Yeah, because this year on pledge, we have one fifty four. Next year we have one hundred and twenty six thousand will come in, ninety eight thousand, forty seven thousand. Twenty two thousand, and then we have twelve thousand for the last three years of the, of the pledges. So it begins to kind of really go down after a while.
We were seeing what it.
I mean, paid off.
Yeah. Any signs of students?
Well, I, I, I don't know. I don't know because the, um, uh, part of the strategy of the foundation is to pay off the Redler loan. That, that's what we want to do. Um, uh, and so this process would allow us to get, pay off the Redler loan. And then with the foundation would incur its own, uh, loan, uh, for that purpose. So we, we couldn't assign them to you if we needed to, if we wanted to do that. Oh, if you, yeah, if you're giving the full amount, yeah, then. That would be fine. And then we could assign the, 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 uh. Assign the pledges to, absolutely.
And those pledges then would come over, come in over that period of about, you know, nine or 10 years, we'd get the bulk of them within the first three years. That would come back to the, we'd come back to the college, but. Uh, yeah, so, so the college then would assume, I mean, there's really, really low risk. With these outstanding pledges because of the people that, um, you know, I mean, if they pay their, they pay their pledges off. Um, but the college would assume that risk rather than, uh, the way that it's presented here, then the foundation assumes that.
What if we just, I mean, if it's six ninety five, we guys prove one and a quarter, we could put. Hundred grand in another fund for interest for four years and.
You actually shall be have, you have budgeted that amount for the interest already. So you're not having to add anything to the budget at all. It's already there. If you go what I'm, the route I'm suggesting, or that kind of base, what I heard from the board last time.
It was part of, when, when we were at Boston Rec, we paid a lease, you know, a lease cost. And when we came out of Boston Rec, basically what we're doing now is just assigning that, that budgeted lease amount. To the interest on the loan that Redler's, Redler's donated, you know, made a major donation, but then they also loaned. The co, or the foundation funds towards construction of the building. And so we were using that lease payment that had already been budgeted for years and years. That's, that's what's been used to pay the interest on Redler's loan.
Yeah.
So you already have those funds. Those funds are already there in the budget.
Yeah.
Still.
So it's something I guess for the board to consider which route you want to go. Uh, my interpretation that the board was leaning more to the, to the lesser amount. And so the foundation board said, we can do that, um, and, um, because the risk is low for the payment of the pledges. Uh, but the, the goal was to, to move that property from the foundation back to the college. The college has that property. Um, and, um, and then we're also trying to manage our, our, our lender, donor. A, and, and trying to, trying to take care of that as well. No.
No, it's on the main meeting.
Last fiscal year, we're going to end up.
Yeah.
This coming year, I think, uh. I've issued tech supposedly be going in the fall. They're culinary, so I don't think it's.
They, they enrolled in the fall of.
Going this fall.
They had ten classes starting in January.
Yeah.
If they had.
Yeah.
Thirty kids.
I know, I know. Kids from Eldorado went over and really there were two or three that are. The made applications for the culinary that went over on a look see when, when they went over. I forgot what particular day it was, but I, I know that the. The two or three kids kind of came to me and said, hey, I'm making application.
Tom, maybe you could, before the May meeting. Tom, maybe could, before the May meeting, could you give us sort of an amortization table of what we think the interest rate would be each year? Assuming that, assuming pledges come in as expected.
Yep, I can do that.
Would that help?
No, none, none at all, if you recall, that was the original conversation I was beginning to have, but there was some differing thought on. The higher amount versus the lower amount, and so in conversation with the foundation board. The foundation board said we're comfortable with the lower amount, if that's where the college board wants to go, so.
It's set aside in a designated account.
That's gonna change. We wouldn't have the right to pay off the loan because we don't have the loan. Right, would the foundation always be open to us paying off the loan on their behalf and accepting an assignment of the remaining pledge?
I think that, yeah, that would help us, cuz our, our real goal is to retire the Redler loan. And so however that happens, we're, the foundation would be very glad to do that. It's really just what the col, how the college wants to do this.
Yeah, I think though, Linda has. We really would like to see those options.
Paying off the loan might be much more expensive for us than just paying interest over four years. There would be four hundred grand versus seventy-five grand. Well, no, cuz we get pledges.
Yeah.
If we paid off the loan, we'd get the pledges, we would just get them over the course.
Get them over time.
Over time, instead of having them. No, I think that's, it's a good. Tom, thank you, any other questions on this? We had hoped to talk about the. Board information requests, but Kim's not here and it's already, it's already six, are you comfortable? Holding that thought? Oh, if you, yeah, if you have something.
One item which you asked. Many other things just. I mean, to ask everyone who reviews the oral policies. Because we are not following them. And so in reference to charging, there's no incentive on charging or processing. And then also. I would like to talk about all the.
For instance, we saw last month when there was a misunderstanding and I see that our staff is trying to be accommodating. But I'd like for our staff to get their direction from us. To Dr. Kroll and then on to them, so they don't have to fear they're not getting something done, they're gonna be asked for. And that we approve things and if core information or if information studies are required, I'd like with the board to be. In a majority of people that wanna see the information, if not, I think the trustees requesting the information should pay for it, as our core policy. Direct, so that's all I have and we can do it another time.
Okay, thank you, I would just offer one thing, the, I know the, the complaint issue was one that came up at length. I would encourage, and I've not seen these before, so, but I would encourage everyone to take some time and look at them. If you have a concern with what's being proposed, come to the meeting with an alternative. Unless you're just happy with the things exactly where they are, but it's oftentimes we, we have problems with what's proposed, but we're not as good about. Suggesting what we think would be an alternative, so.
I think it's, maybe, I don't know if it's on here or not, but I think it also needs to be addressed that. If you're going to decide automatically that the board has to decide what cores get answered and which ones don't. As far as board members, then where's the line? One trustee wants it, two trustee wants it, the majority, which is always for right now, at least until. Is it gonna be the majority?
We'll bring, let's have that discussion. The sense I get an information request is, it's not as much a long party line, so to speak, as it is. What is the group as a whole think of the necessity of the information with respect to what it's going to cost? Cost generally to pull it all together, at least that, that's my view, it has nothing to do with who the requesting person is, it's a cost benefit.
Why we want it and how it's gonna be used so that we understand the value of doing. I don't, Cora, you can request for anytime you want, the policy says you would pay. At this point, so we said we were gonna do travel reimbursement because that's what our policy said and today Cora says. That if you request, then you'll be given the estimate and pay it. The only way to change that is either for us as a board majority to say, yes, we wanna see that information, we request that the cost be exempted. Or number two, to. You know, say, sure, go ahead and get it, so.
And also maybe something in here adding records that are already existent, because. Try to, I try to, try to imagine what records we have. And limit my course, I think we have, and if we don't have, but I think. Maybe we should have, now that's kind of presumptuous on my part, but on the other hand, I don't have the academic outlook. I have the, the cost, cost account.
Well, let's just take, I mean, take a look at the, let's all take a look at the policy and figure out where things like that would be appropriately inserted and then we've got it for discussion. I, I would just suggest on the, the show, if someone approaches me at confidence, we can't mandate. What I have to do with somebody having an awkward conversation.
You don't have to say who talked to you or anything else, you just say that there's a problem with X.
Private, if somebody just wants to share something private, we have not gone to enter the obligation. It's gonna be a case by case issue, without then you can mandate my speech or action. I mean, you guys can do whatever you want, it's just.
Well, maybe. We had this conversation before.
Maybe, maybe the issue is, how do you define a complaint? And maybe that's where there's some discussion about what does complaint mean, does it mean? Your, your friend at church grousing about, gosh, I had to pay more taxes this year. Or does it mean something more concrete and specific and that's.
Judge that because we, we pretty much.
We would need to define that. Yeah.
We, we do need to define it, but you know. We don't always get to define as a board, some of the policies that are made out, we, we just have to end up agreeing to them and. I don't know, I, I didn't really like the policy.
Well, this is our chance to, I mean, Lynn is proposing this with our chance to look at it and revise it and it would be like we need to tweak it, we do so.
This is part of bylaws, we put all of that information in front of you in the fall and you made changes to professional development and.
And I'm willing to follow whatever the majority.
And, and we do need, we do need to vote on them so that it's clearly who is in support of these changes and who is not in support of them.
Well, they're bylaw changes. This isn't something Dr. Kroll just puts together, it would certainly be voted in. All the discussion about it will be open too.
This was already written up. Yes, this is part of board bylaws that you have approved, yeah, that you've already approved.
Yeah, the board has approved them, I know.
Different ones since we've been here, yes. But we, the entire board has not always been supporting all of the changes there, that's.
No, that's true, but, but everyone reminds you that once the board votes on those policies, you've heard that from all of the trainers. Then the, that becomes board policy and even though you didn't vote for, or you don't agree with it, you can tell people you didn't agree with it, but it's a policy that has to be supported. Because the, because the majority of the board.
There are certain things that, that I, I will not, I will not do, I mean, I just will not violate compliments.
Let's, let's go down that rabbit hole we talk, we define complaint. With that, we don't need to motion anything, we're in a work session, so we're, thanks everybody for your time tonight.